All right, it's the magic hour. I will call our meeting to order and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Shereen, if you'd do the honors for roll call, please.
Brant?
Here.
Frick?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Shield?
Here.
Greenway?
Yes, we have a quorum. Item two on our agenda is to approve the agenda before us.
Motion to approve the agenda before us.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number three is the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting in September in our special school board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the September eighth, twenty twenty-five regular school board meeting and the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special school board meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of both meetings. Uh, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number four is the time during the meeting where if anyone has a conflict, either direct or indirect, we do disclose it at this time. Hearing none, we will move on to item number five, our consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove any item for further discussion?
Um, I would like to remove item D, please.
Item D, as in David, will be removed. Any other member have any that they would like to remove? Hearing none, motion for the consent agenda for all remaining items except D.
Motion on all consent items except D on today's agenda.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda excluding item D. Um, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Separately then, we will entertain a motion to approve the item D work agreements.
Motion to approve item D.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second and roll call, please.
Shield?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Abstain.
Greenway?
Yes. Moving on, public comment is item number six. Did we have anyone sign up for public comments?
Nobody signed up this afternoon or this evening.
All right, very good. Item number seven then is our good news and student achievement and Mrs. Nicole Valdez will start us off. Oh, sorry. No, go ahead. I didn't look up. I'm sorry, Todd. Todd, you were just listed second, so you're gonna be first up.
Well, good evening and thank you. Uh, as we get started tonight, I'd like to invite Ms. Eva Reyes, or excuse me, Eva Paulson Reyes. Ms. Eva Paulson to come up. Uh, Eva's part of our internship program and she was in the consent agenda tonight as a work agreement and she's working at one of our elementaries with our internship program. So she's gonna come up and talk a little bit about that and she would love to entertain a few questions on the internship program. Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm a YHS senior here and I decided to, um, take the internship slash World of Work program and ultimately I started off in World of Work because I wasn't sure what grade I wanted to be a part of or shadow, so I was willing to move around, but Mr. Muth found the opportunity to be a parent intern at one of the elementary schools, which worked out really nicely. And so I'm now interning under Paige Steiner, the first grade teacher at Stewart. And it is my favorite part of every single day. I, I love being there. And normally, just like a typical day there, I'm, I come in at about like the middle of their, their math lesson and then I usually sit down with a couple kids and make sure they're on task. And then we do a practice page every day after our lesson and so I work with a few students in a small group setting where I just read them the question and then usually they try to figure it out on their own, but if they're still kind of stuck, then we work through it together. And then after that, usually, um, Mrs. Steiner will have some, either she has some like example things she wants me to make for the class or I'm helping her prep for upcoming lessons. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it for what I do, but she keeps me busy.
Any board member have any questions?
Has this helped you decide what grade you'd be interested in?
Um, yeah, I do definitely think I want to be in the, the lower grade levels first, around first grade or kindergarten. I think it's a really great level to be at. They're lots of fun.
Wonderful. Well, thanks for participating in it. I'm sure they've enjoyed getting to have you as a, a guest as frequently as you have been.
I hope so.
And it's great just to have that interaction as well to, um, any particular aha moment stand out for you at all that, yeah, this is exactly what I need to do or want to do or anything of that that you want to share with us?
I honestly, I have so many. Like every day, my dad can, can account for this. I, every day I come home with stories of like, wow, these kids just made my day. But, yeah.
Great. Well, any other questions? Excellent. Thank you for participating.
My middle daughter Lily's in Ms. Steiner's class.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know Lily. You're welcome.
Hopefully she's not too much trouble for you.
No, she's great.
Good.
Way to hang back and wait for the comments.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you taking time to come tonight.
On a side note with that as well, Eva is also our president of our Educators Rising chapter. Um, so a, a chapter that Ms. Valdez is, uh, currently overseeing and we have a lot of great ideas with that and, uh, um, just really excited about bringing that excitement to education with all of our high school students and, and letting them explore that opportunity. So, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight. Uh, the next thing that I have, um, in, back in January of last year, uh, we as the district applied for a Perkins Reserve grant, um, which can provide up to fifty thousand dollars to support some innovative ideas within our CTE program. The big thing with the, this three high needs areas is, you know, working with special populations, industrial alignment and innovative delivery. Uh, Mr. Johnson, as the head of our CTE department, really worked hard coming up with something that's innovative, something that's gonna grab some attention of our, of our students and then also aligning with our industry partners that are out in our manufacturing, uh, community as well. So, uh, we found out in, uh, late March that we were awarded the grant and we put in for some great innovative things that I'm gonna let Mr. Johnson and Mr. Wagner come up and showcase. And they want all kinds of questions as well.
No, I'm not. I'm the support guy here.
So we went after, uh, what's called a fiber laser cutter. Um, its general purpose is to cut steel, uh, different types of, uh, metal. Um, if you just wanna wait with that just a little bit, I'll kind of explain what's going on. With a fiber laser, it has a regular laser in it and it pumps it into fiber optic cable and they use rare earth elements, um, earth metals to intensify that laser beam and it gets down to like the thickness of a number two pencil lead. And we have some examples here. We'll show you how exact it is. Um, it's a thousand, a fifteen hundred watt laser compared to the one that we use over in the high school, which is a thirty-five watt and that'll burn wood. Um, so there's, there's your differences in those two lasers. Um, this here, uh, the video that we're gonna show here is, uh, eleven gauge steel. It's about an eighth inch thick. It's the same thickness as these, um, little bells that we have here that we're gonna show you here in a little bit, but go ahead and, and play that one. You can see how quick and efficient it is. And when it's done cutting, it's, there's no slag on the backside. There's no material to remove. It's, it's smooth as a baby's bottom on the edge. It's just crazy how that thing can cut. And we're kind of in awe right now just looking at this and how thick it'll cut. I'm gonna show you some examples, um, that the guy came in to install it and he was trying to set up different parameters for the different thicknesses of steel. And you'll see the edges on them have streaks in them and he was not satisfied with them until that was completely smooth. So I'll show you these. If you wanna keep these together, just look at the edges of them.
Just to kind of give you an idea, uh, we, we have similar software that can, our, our, our pinch point was, uh, really the equipment to make, make what we were trying to set out, not a software or design aspect. And, uh, prior to this thing showing up, this just happened to overlap, but we had a kid who was making, he's in Mr. Yegi's automotive class and he's, uh, rebuilding a go-kart of some sort and he needed some large spacers because the axle was rubbing up against the tires. So he was, uh, manually cutting these with a plasma cutting torch and then drilling the holes. So it probably took him, I don't know, two class periods and then this is what it comes out with. And then like from a school district perspective, you take this home and you're like, look what I did at school today. It's not like super impressive. And then, uh, then within a matter of ten minutes, maybe less, this one goes home with him and there's like math, engineering and, and.
So if you wanna go ahead and Shereen, play the next video. This is three eighths thick steel. So it's, so it pierces at first and then it starts to cut. Obviously, it's gonna go a little bit slower. And then it also has the ability to etch in the steel and we have some examples of that, but you can watch it here on the video etch. I think that's the next.
This is better.
So we have a lot of things we can do with this. Um, Nicole hasn't, uh, she doesn't have the curriculum written yet for this machine. But, uh, you know, right now we're looking at, you know, uh, increasing math skills, um, teaching kids what parameters are, how to use this machine, changing nozzles, what different nozzles are for, what they do. Um, we can use compressed oxygen for cutting steel. We have to use hydrogen for cutting aluminum. It will not, it, it'll cut copper and shiny material, but not very well, not very efficient. You have to have a hundred thousand dollar machine to do that. So this one here was a sixty thousand dollar machine. We got a fifty thousand dollar grant and the machine was a fifteen thousand dollar discount, so we got it for forty-five thousand dollars. Justin?
How do you guys source like the, the fuel or the rare earth metals for cutting? Like is that a readily found thing locally or where do you get, like, it's cutting with the laser, I understand that.
It's in the fiber optics.
It's in the fiber, that is. So you don't have to reload anything into there. There's no like cutting fuel, nothing involved that'd be on that.
Just a compressed oxygen or hydrogen would, depending on what we're cutting. Right now, we're just using compressed oxygen. And then the consumables for this are the nozzles, the tips that you can see underneath there, right above that fish eye. That's the nozzle for it. They're about twenty-five dollars apiece and we don't know, it's only had it for a week, so we don't know how long they last. And then there's a laser lens. Did you happen to check to see how much that was? Twenty-two dollars for the laser lens. So compared to a plasma cutter which we had, which the plasma cutter that we had was not very good plasma cutter. It would lose itself. We were ru- ruining so much steel, we just shut it down. But like the consumables for that were probably seventy-five dollars to eighty dollars every time and they would only last maybe a week or two.
That's impressive. That's super efficient. Like, I cut stuff and make a mess most of the time and waste money, so that's great.
I was gonna ask, what projects are you most looking forward to using with this new device in our school?
We're using it in our advanced welding, our, uh, first year welding and then Brandon's going to be using it in his intro to manufacturing class.
Are there certain components though of those classes that you're most looking forward, that, the fact that you have this? Cause those classes have existed. So like what are you most looking forward to in those classes with this addition?
Something that'll cut ice signs out and do some different parts like this. You know, in fact, that was crossed over into automotive's class, so we're gonna be using it hopefully for cross-curriculum.
Yeah.
I could see using this machine in our cabinetry class, making a sign and then mounting that on a piece of wood and maybe epoxying over the top of it.
You're just gonna find more and more things, huh, as you go? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is the programming, you know, or is that a difficult thing to learn? Is there?
Yeah, so it's super easy with, and, and I think the part of it, that, that end of it, that is, uh, unique. Um, state schools have a free subscription to, um, Google SketchUp and it's a web-based app and they can access it from a Chromebook or, uh, whatever and do the, the design work. And, uh, no, that part of it is actually very simple on the software end. That actually runs the laser. We've been very impressed with also. I would, I would add probably, uh, it was very seamless to see the, we were trained last week, early part of the week during manufacturing week and, uh, this, the day following, uh, our training, our kids who watched us get trained using that piece of equipment and, and watched what it could do, went through Manitou and saw the very same machine doing what it does there. So like that correlation and like as we think about the projects that we can make and hopefully they, that word travels, I guess, and, and see the, the cool and unique things that you can make and, uh, hopefully just to, just reach a few more and, and try to spark a little more interest, so, yeah.
Other thing too, um, that fish that was on there, Brandon went into an AI program and basically typed in and said, make a, make a fish with Johnson underneath of it and within about five minutes it popped that out. He changed that to a DXF file, which that laser cutter will read and brought it over to the laser, plugged it in and then cut it out. It was probably a ten-minute process. And this is our first week using it. I think we had to wait four minutes for AI to.
Yeah, the, the image generation is the slowest part. That's crazy.
We're a little impatient, aren't we? So, you know, students ask me what I think of AI. It's just like the internet, you know? When that came into play, if it's used right, it's an awesome tool. It's an awesome thing we can use and take benefit from, so.
Hey, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Where, where did this come from?
China.
Was there a tariff?
No, we beat the tariffs.
Okay, good.
Yes. So we were, it took us about, they told us six to eight weeks and it was about twelve weeks and I was getting a little nervous. Um, we got ahold of the company and they said it's, it's about a, a week out on the ship yet and it was coming into Houston. It was delivered to Houston about the middle of September and then I believe we took possession of it the end of September. And they were up last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday installing and training us on that machine, so.
Was this an item you guys have been hoping to get for a while and this grant came about or how did that, how did that process happen?
We wanted something different than a plasma cutter. And Dr. Kendall and Mr. Duratchek said, we need cutting-edge technology, not the plasma cutter. That's old technology. So I looked into laser cutting and this is what I found and this is what we can afford. And I think it's, I think it's plenty of machine to get high school kids excited about metalwork.
So how did, and maybe you said, but I missed it, um, but how did you find out about that grant? I mean, when you were looking at the different things that you wanted on your wish list to bring in, um, did it just kind of pop up or is there like a group that you can go to to just?
So my wish list is long. I keep that in a Google file. It, uh, well, that's the truth. But, uh, no, Dr. Kendall got informed of it. I got, I get emails from the state. It's a reserve grant and it's a grant. I think out of the Perkins money, I believe fifteen percent of that the state can set aside for special projects like this Perkins Reserve grant and then help districts that need a big chunk of money for enhancing a program. We don't apply for these, um, very often. Um, I don't know if we could get one every year, but the last time I believe we applied for one, we got suitcase welders for the middle school, the Lincoln Suitcase Virtual Welders. So they do it on a computer screen. Tell them what they're doing. That was about thirty thousand, I believe, that we, the reserve grant were.
So do the students ever get to bring in like their own projects that they can do to try to incorporate that? And, and I'm just thinking about, you know, like if they're in the automotive's class, they can bring their car in and get it worked on. So is there anything that they could bring in from the outside that maybe they could utilize some of this technology to just kind of have hands-on, own personal things to learn to create?
Yes. Yep, they bring in cars. Um, we've had students, I can't think of anything right off the top of my head with metal that they would bring in. Um, we've had people from the outside come in with different things and want to fix their own welding and things like that. But as far as a major project a student could bring in, I can't think of anything.
Can't think of one right offhand. In our intro to manufacturing, our kids generally, um, try to take a project that they built out with them, uh, but never anything that they brought in at, at that level. I don't know about the, I don't know about Mr. Yegi's in the welding class still. Not that I'm aware of.
I, and maybe I, I don't know exactly, but like could they, if they needed a washer that was a certain size, it was odd for putting something together, would they be able to, you know, take a piece of metal and create it and just make their own part rather than ordering it kind of thing with that?
You could do that. You know, one of the things you have to be careful of, and I've had several students come up to me and ask me about bringing in something like a deer stand to fix. And I don't let them do that because I feel like there's a liability there. If they hang that thing up in the tree and they fall out of it, you know, is a finger gonna point at me? So we kind of stay away from that stuff. Now that I think about it, we have had students come in and try to get aluminum parts welded, which we don't have the capability of doing, like off of a motorcycle or something, a frame will break and they'll try to get that welded. We don't have that capability to do that, but you have to be careful with doing that and the liability part of it.
Makes sense. Makes sense. All right, any other questions from any board member? Well, thank you for pursuing and.
Those little bells, you guys can each have one of them. You have extra ones?
Thank you.
Very cool.
They're so cool.
Yes, I have, I just took a picture of that quick here the other day. This is a storage facility that we were building behind the school where the old house used to be built and it is, um, fifty feet wide and forty feet deep. So, and that's the process. We've got the progress of it. We've got it shingled now and some Tyvek on it and, uh, we're gonna start putting siding on it. So just a quick note on that. We have some bells back here. If you wanna grab one of them and take a look at it and, there you go.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing with us. All right, next up.
Hello, uh, I see why Mr. D wanted to go first, so I'll try to follow up. Uh, just a few things that we've been working on. Uh, one is at the end of September, we had our fall Title One Family informational meeting. So typically in the spring, we have the big bash at the library where we bring all of our Title One students and their families and we play games that are related to math and reading to get them excited about continued learning through the summer um, in a more game-like fashion. But we always start the year with an informational session um, for families that might be new to the Title One program. We hosted this at each of the elementary sites and TLC and our Title One teachers led it. Uh, we had a, an interpreter there. We had pizza. We had students, uh, from our high school that volunteered to hang out with the kids while parents were learning more about the Title One program. Uh, our biggest goal is to bring them into the school, show them who we are as Title One teachers, help them to understand what we're doing with their students when we pull them, um, down for their lessons and then how they can help them at home as well. Uh, last year was our first year. We kind of kicked off a fall event in this manner, kind of more of an informational time. And then this was our second year. I would say this year we had close to about seventy-five people, so students and, um, family members at, across the four buildings. So that was great. Last year we maybe had, uh, maybe twenty and so I think we really increased a lot. We were excited about that and we'll continue, um, that way as well. And then just an update on some curriculum things. So, uh, you'll be hearing from me this school year. Uh, we are in year one, so we're doing a curriculum guide for foreign language and art and we just kicked off those committees. Art will kick off here soon. And then we are in year two, which is looking at resources for science, music, physi- physical education and health. And then we're in our implementation year of social studies. So the resources that we approved, that you all approved in April, um, are now inside of our classrooms. And then just as a note, um, we have that schedule that every seven years we start a curriculum committee and review what we're doing with our resources, the standards and such. But we also do smaller type things, uh, just based on need, um, and changes. So I also listed just a few other things that we're working on, uh, with staff across different buildings. But, uh, Swank is a video streaming software that the state used to provide to us through the library, uh, the state library, and now we do have to purchase that ourselves. Um, Ms. Bestie, as our technology integrationist, she last year put together a list of quarterly goals by grade level uh, with the teachers. And so for example, um, I know fourth grade right now for quarter one, their goal was to learn and teach their students then, uh, with Ms. Ms. Bestie's help, how to give out a Google Doc and then how students can turn it back in, um, to their teacher more efficiently than having to hit the share button and all those things. And then that really helps the next grade level teachers and then extremely helps our middle school, high school so that they know those students are ready with those kind of set technology skills. Uh, Mr. Clemish is having me work with the sped teachers at the elementary on what writing resources that we have for students on an IEP. We're looking at handwriting with our kindergarten and first grade. How can we help improve that? Some of our resources just needed a second look, um, and then some norms around them. And then something really exciting that we did, um, at TLC and then also within our title program and ELL is add a program called CAPIT. Um, it is something that is enhancing our beginning, our emergent reading instruction. And what is wonderful about CAPIT is it uses a mnemonic device to teach students the formation of a letter. So I'm just gonna say something to you and then I want you to all think about if you were three, four and five trying to learn your letters and I am saying, okay, that, that letter up there under, by that first bullet, that's a F. It's an F and it's written with a long stick and a short, two short sticks. And so it's just a lot of language for our kids. A lot of times you hear like the letter M. Okay, I hear M, so it makes an uh sound. Nope, it actually makes a mm sound. And so it's just really challenging. What is beautiful about CAPIT is it uses a mnemonic device. And so instead of teaching the children that this is the letter M, we just teach them the sound. So this is a mm and it has a mustache is this one and so it, it's formed like a mustache. And so, um, our preschool students love it. Um, and our, I have a fourth grade student that is an ELL student, still learning his letter sounds, loves it, so excited. Um, it's, it's been a wonderful addition as a resource to our schools. And so just little projects that we're working on outside of those bigger curriculum reviews. Any questions?
No pun intended, but can you spell the CAPIT so that I understand what you're saying? Like C-A-P-I-T?
Yes.
Capit?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, does it stand for?
It's just the name of the program.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting. Very good. Any other questions for Nicole?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item number eight on our agenda is to appoint a delegate to the Associated School Boards of South Dakota for the twenty twenty-six legislative update. And I am asking to be that candidate this year. I know that it has been some time since I have been out there. So Associated School Boards now is in the process of holding their regional meetings.
um, with various locations throughout the state to get feedback from school boards to be able to put together what their positions are going to be for education. And then this final meeting, which will be held on November twenty-first in Pier, will bring the one delegate from each school board to be able to provide input and vote on the positions that we have for uh, the legislative session. So that is what it is and I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to it. Or I would take a motion to approve me being the delegate.
I, can I make a statement and then I would?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would gladly um, motion here. Uh, one thing I will say that I'm greatly appreciative of you Kathy is that you continue to keep everyone in the loop, the way the board needs to be in the group. One-on-one conversation, filling us in, keeping us up to date, making sure we're aware of all the trainings that are available, um, educating us on the parts of that that are important, the things you feel like we should also have education on as well as being board members and not just for you. So I have greatly appreciated that since you have stepped into this position. So I want to say thank you. And second, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Kathy Greenaway as the official Yankton School District Delegate to the annual ASBSD Delegate Assembly.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number nine is a calendar amendment. Um, there is a recommendation for moving some teacher in training. And I'm gonna just turn that over to Dr. Kendall to kind of talk a little bit about uh, the move and why.
Yep, so we've done this before. Um, we get Title II A training money for staff to go to different trainings, whether it be in-state, out-of-state, regionally. And um, the TIA conference has flipped back and forth between Rapid City and Sioux Falls. And this year it's going to be in Sioux Falls. And we took a look at our calendar and we thought it would be an easy swap to change out these in-service dates. And also knowing that we had carryover from Title II A money going to the school year. So we would be able to send all of our staff to one of the two days of the TIA conference in Sioux Falls. And we would provide the transportation up and back. And it's a great opportunity for our staff to get involved in some of their breakout sessions, hear a couple of good speakers. Uh, like I said, we've done this before and it was really interesting. The first time that we did it, I couldn't believe how many staff members had made the comment that this was the first time they've ever been to a conference like that with breakout sessions. So we're looking forward to it. Um, there will be a mill that will be provided and we'll provide the transportation. And there will be some that will come back a little earlier for their activities. But we are just asking the board to move those two in-service dates. And amend the calendar.
All right, any comments or questions in regards to what Dr. Kendall shared with us? All right, then I would open it up for a motion to approve that calendar change.
Motion to amend the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar as stated.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to make that amendment to the calendar for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Shield?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number ten on our agenda is a school board meeting date change. And this will be upcoming in February. Typically, our meeting date would fall in February on February ninth, on that Monday. However, that particular day is standard with Public Education Day in Pier. So in observance of that day, we are looking at moving our meeting then to Tuesday, February tenth and encourage us as board members to be able to attend if it works into our schedule. Parents, um, staff, school board members, community members, um, to be able to go to Pier and support public education. Um, anything else? The Yankton School District is planning to attend and participate, but any other comments with?
No, you summed it up really well Kathy. Um, the only other thing would be is that we are planning to take a charter bus up. We've got that reserved. And um, I'm gonna get s- the word out to some of our businesses in town that might have an interest in sending somebody. And like Kathy mentioned, we will take a few students up with us, school board members. We're gonna invite some teachers to attend. And hopefully we have a full busload going from Yankton to join several other schools for this really important day in Pier to talk about what we do in public education. And so I hope that um, we have good weather because I don't know that there's an alternative date. But as we get closer, we'll find it out if we actually go. And hopefully we don't go and get stuck in Pier for a night or we're gonna enjoy sleeping on the charter, so.
All right, I assume there'd probably be some kind of a sign up or something ahead of time to know how many. All right. All right, with that then, this is an action item to move that date, so I would open that up for a motion.
Motion to approve the uh, moving the February ninth, twenty-twenty-sixth school board meeting to Tuesday, February tenth, twenty-twenty-sixth. Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Brant?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number eleven is an update on our state testing requirements. And Mr. Doratchek is back to give us the news.
Thank you. So this evening, just want to talk a little bit briefly about uh, some of the ACT and our state testing requirements that have been implemented. Um, as you all are aware, No Child Left Behind, we were, we were, we have to be testing third through eighth graders and eleventh graders. Okay, so we've done that for a very long time. And we come to you and report those tests along with certain criteria for our state report card. Uh, the Department of Education has implemented for just eleventh grade this year um, and the years going forward, that we will be taking the ACT test as juniors. Now, this will be all juniors. That will be the, the state assessment. Um, there's been a lot of questions, um, not necessarily a lot of answers just yet, but we're continuing to work side by side with the Department of Ed, uh, with some webinars, our counselors, um, Ms. Valdez. We, we've worked with getting as much information as we can to start planning and having um, our students prepped for this. Now, the ACT isn't anything that's new. What's new is it's gonna be all students are taking the ACT, ACT assessment. Um, whether you ha- there's many different feelings about that with my own colleagues throughout the state, um, of where that's gonna look and what that's going to look like. You know, what are we doing for Yankton High School? Um, we've sat down and we've really talked about a good plan that we have in place with, first off, what are the things that we have to continue to get updated on? And we're reviewing many different webinars of what that looks like to give our students ACT tests. Uh, we're also going to have an ACT Parent Informational Night that we have coming up. Currently, and we've always done this, we're in, within our curriculum embedded, we're looking at just different ways that we can bring in ACT um, test prep. Whether that's in the math, English, whether that's with Mr. Johnson out in his classes as well, with what he's doing in the CTE area. So we look at that cross-curricular. So, and that's something that we've always done. Um, and like I said, the big difference that we have this year is, is that, you know, when, when students came and took, took the ACT, they had to pay a fee. And they went in and they paid the fee and they usually spent the Saturday morning. And there's sometimes that where students were taking that multiple different times. Uh, for the ACT now, for juniors, they're gonna come in. It's not gonna cost them anything. The state's providing that. They'll come in. We've set aside a day, um, which we're gonna be administering that test. Uh, there's different things that we will have to, some, there's some accommodations that are made for students that are on IEPs, for students that may be on a five oh four or even on a, a, a LAP plan, um, Language Acquisition Plan that we have as well. So there's many different accommodations and many different things that we're working through with what that looks like. Uh, those scores that we do and when we have this plan and we have a couple of dates down in March, um, not the first dates by any means, but in March to administer this test, we'll get the results. And what they're, what the state is doing is then they're gonna pull in a group of people to say where are our cut scores at or where are the scores of what that looks like um, from the assessment that we were just given. So we have a lot of work that is continuing to be done. We're still learning a lot. I think we're all well-versed within what the ACT is and what that does. Um, the biggest, you know, a pinch point that I have is that all students are taking this assessment. It, it, and, and I think that's something that we've always talked about with the assessments that we've given from the state is are these assessments the right assessment to be given? Um, so there's things that we're still struggling with, that we're, we're working with. But I would say that the plan that we have in place, the implementation that we have for all of our students, um, our counselors have done a very good job. We've had input. There's been some things that we're looking at. We're also going to be meeting with um, my colleagues in our ESD schools, talk and sharing plans with that upcoming with how they're implementing it and how they're doing it and to compare. Um, you know, it's a change and it's a shift. It's something where we, as eleventh grade, we've been giving the Smarter Balance Assessment, just like they do for the third through eighth grade. And we get those results back and um, we, we go into data digs and data dives and, and we've looked at that. You know, the one thing that I've been proud of is, is w- we're always at towards the top in within our, our report card range within that comparative to um, our ESD schools. So that's still our goal. We're gonna maintain to do those things towards the top. And we're gonna continue working. We're gonna continue learning. And um, it's something that, like I said, when it comes to be a sign up, I'm hoping I'm gonna have my name in there first to be part of the, we're, to figuring out where those cut scores are to understand, learn and, and learn with that within ACT. So I'll open it up for any questions that you may have, any things, any concerns that you may have.
I just am curious if you know how many students have elected to take the ACT in the past?
Yeah, that's a great question. W- we are, we have always been and traditionally been in, you know, sixty to seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Um, you know, those, during COVID, we went down a little bit. But we've always had a really good, strong stu- uh, student population that have been taking that. Now, I will tell you this as well, within other schools, when they have some concerns, they've actually been advising that you don't need to take the ACT in the past because colleges have really went away from that as being an acceptance necessarily. Um, there's talk and, and I don't know where that's at, but that may be coming back into play a little bit more. Um, but I think it's something that we're gonna continue to learn with that as well.
Have the students, I'm assuming they've been made aware that this is something they're gonna be doing?
Yes.
Has there been feedback from them as to how they feel? Do they feel added pressure? Is it just something they've accepted?
I think it's something that they've accepted. I think they also understand that a, that a majority of our students are already taking the ACT test and they're giving up a Saturday. They're going to do that. Um, they might be doing it two or three times and um, this is a time that they're gonna be able to come in and take it during the school setting. And hopefully with the supports that we have in place that it's comfortable for them to do that.
Mm-hmm. That is a nice aspect of it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Todd?
Um, just that you mentioned uh, all students having to take this, is that different than what was required when you took the Smarter Balance Test? Where there are?
There was all students had to take the Smarter Balance.
As well. And it's, it's pretty similar.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, I comparatively, it's not probably similar. Um, there's, I don't know if it's similar, I mean, I would say that it's not similar questions necessarily. But I think that it's also something that we're digging in. The biggest thing that I am looking for is the response from the ACT. So we can do data digs into looking at where are we, where do we need to work on, where are we strong at? That's always been sometimes a struggle. You just get, this is your score in math, this is your average score in reading. So we really need to break, be able to break that down and then go back into our standards and our curriculum to see, we need to hit this a little bit harder. This is our strength and to look at that. That's something that, um, whether we like the Smarter Balance Test or not, that we were able to and finally working on within our data digs to focus on different areas and, and to really improve. So when you change something like this, you don't know what that's going to look like. And that's probably one of my concerns is that I want to be able to go in and look at right away, if you're gonna be, we're gonna be reporting scores, this is where we've done really well with. With ACT, eh, we need to make sure we're driving that down to content and some standards as well.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on that too regarding the two tasks, the Smarter Balance and the ACT. Like this is the best example that I feel like I can give when comparing the two tests. And I've talked to Mr. Doratchek about this. So we have had kids um, on the ACT score in the mid to upper thirties, which is quite exceptional for their math. And yet, when they took the Smarter Balance Tests, they were finding it hard to be considered proficient in math. So there's definitely, they're not the same and there's a big difference in the assessment. And one of the things that I think that the ACT will prove is that the Smarter Balance Assessment is not a good assessment. And I have said that for years, that it's not, it's just not a great assessment. Um, when we, when we started the Smarter Balance, the first year that we had the Smarter Balance in Yankton and across the state, our scores plummeted, just like all other schools. And to me, that was the first indicator that it was not a good assessment. Because our kids did not change from one year to the next. And so there's part of me that is, I'm kind of excited to see this with the ACT. And on the other hand, I think we all have to know the reality of it is going to be, I think that the overall average of our ACT score is gonna drop a bit in Yankton and across the state with everybody taking it. And so there should be no surprise with that. And I think that we are prepared for that. We understand that. But I think some will be surprised, including those in the legislature. And hopefully, the intent of South Dakota taking the ACT, I hope that the intent of the legislature was not to show that, oh my gosh, we have these failing public schools because look what happened to our ACT scores. Because that is not true. But when you have more kids taking a test, the likelihood of your average going down is quite high. So I, I just think that that's important for people to understand. But our kids are up for the challenge.
Um, I just had a couple of questions as well. So do we have a date when the first test is gonna be administered?
So that is, that is a great question. Yes. Um, we have down as a tentative, March eighteenth is the kind of that first date that we're going to, wait, look. Now, the thing that's difficult and it's, you know, if you, if you've ever been to an ACT, it's while you show up, or if you don't show up, you're, you get to come to the next session and you. So we have, and then we have the not, the following uh, March, on my notes here, it has, March twenty-first, I believe, or no, March, the next week in March there is a, is a makeup session, I would say, or if you were absent. And then we have another following one as well. So we have three dates set within those last two weeks of March, first week of April. So we have three dates set within those last two weeks of March, first week of April.
So and and I know that some juniors can even start doing some testing in October already, so. Do they still have that flexibility that, you know what, I'm not going to wait until I have to do it in school, I want to get my ACT done now? And go in October and if they wait until March, do they have that opportunity? Well, I don't know if I did that good, but I practiced with it, so now I'm going to go in April and I'm going to do it again, I mean, is there some of that going on?
That is the great question.
You got some good ones to make.
I was writing down as we're talking.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to your dates, March tenth, eighteenth and twenty-fifth, that's the dates that we have scheduled. So going back to your your next question. The this is something that we're working with and we need to, we need to continue to communicate and advocate with the state. What the state is telling us is that the scores will only count for schools in this testing session. Now, can students still go and sign up and take the ACT in October? Yes. But that score, the score that they take in the testing session for schools from February to the middle of April. Will be the scores that the schools get, so that's what they're telling us right now. When I meet with uh my colleagues as our ESD administrators, that's all going to be very much heartburn for all of us. With that, because we have students that that are coming in and and they have a great score already and well. We want them to continue to have those scores and and show us what they're doing, so. Those are things that we're going to continue to be advocating and working with the state on this process of implementing the ACT.
So keep following that line then, so as a student and I take my ACT in March. Am I able to pull that score and send it to the college that I want to go to, so? We're going to be able to talk back and forth to colleges with that?
With that score.
Okay.
Or or scores that, I mean, they they're able to use scores from previous as well. From my understanding, going into the school report card, it's just going to be from this testing session, am I correct on that? Score, there's super score.
One more thing that I think is important, whichever one of you want to answer this, but maybe just talk a little bit. About how important the cut scores are when those are set.
So I think that that is going to be important and that's why I said I my name's going to be the first one on to sit around with with. The educators to determine those because of where we're testing with what we're doing, with what our requirements are. For A, a high school diploma to be what that is as a one, two, three, four, proficient, whatever those things look like. So that is going to be, that's going to determine where we get our report cards back with our school report card, our assessment scores and all of that. So those cut scores and we don't know what those are, we don't know, there's, I don't think there's anything that's even proposed yet. What they tell us is that's coming after we get the test in.
And by cut scores, you mean this is proficient, this is adequate, this is not, is that what you mean?
That's what I mean, yep, so. For instance, your categories of your your advanced, proficient, basic, below basic.
So there's going, the state has advised us that there will be a group um that comes late spring, summer. And they'll take all of the state's scores, so across the whole state of South Dakota, they'll list all the scores and then as a committee. We have to say, okay, in math, from this score to this score on the ACT, we're going to now tag that a level one. From this score to this score, we're going to tag it a level two because our school report card works off of a one, two, three, four. Which is what our state assessment previously works off of, you got a level one, you got a level two, you got a level three, you got a level four. So they have informed us that those benchmark, that benchmark norming will happen after we receive all of the scores. We'll then look at it and probably it's a bell curve and we'll say this, if you score here to here, you're a level one. You score here to here, you're going to be a level two, here to here a level three, here to here a level four. If you look at the states that also use ACT currently as their state assessment, they're all very different. And so we we don't know what it will look like for South Dakota, so we need to be really strong advocates in that area because. As far as I know, from the current state assessment, we've never changed the norms. But our district assessment, we use NWA, it re-norms the scale every five years. And so we have to be really sure that our norms are advocating for our students from the beginning. Because we don't know when they'll let us relook at norms again.
Do you guys know who's all involved in identifying, so I mean administrators, but then are there other people that are involved in that decision making process at the state level that you're aware of?
They're going to put a committee together and they said that they're going to email us and if we'd like to be on the committee. So I've already gave them Mr. D's name a few times, like we would like to be on the committee, so they are not there yet. A lot of answers we get are, oh, we're not quite sure, we'll have to ask ACT, or we're not really sure, we'll have to ask ACT.
So other states are using the ACT as their testing foundation, so.
Yep, I think there are nine states.
Okay. And what happens when there's a student that just doesn't get it done? I mean, are they just factored into the equation or?
So I think you mean that doesn't do the eight?
They just don't, yeah. The dates just don't work and they're not in school or?
Those are all in there, we have done and our particip- we've always had a participation rate. We've always had a high participation rate with our smarter balance assessment. We continue to believe that we're still going to have a high participation rate within our ACT. Is there exceptions that happen? Yes, when those come up, we'll work with them and and it might be a situational. Um I and I would say it's just, they're very situational with that.
All right, a lot of discussion, any?
Great questions.
I have one more, sorry, this is such an important topic though, so. We all know this, the ACT is a national norm test, so it's the same no matter where you go in our country. Whichever state you're in, but as Nicole alluded to, that's why the cut scores are so important. Because states are choosing their own cut scores. And so that's not consistent, it's not the same, but yet. It's going to look a lot different for each state on how well their kids do with the cut scores, does that make sense? So that is a bit problematic and I'm not sure how you're going to compare. Uh states across the country when you're talking about different cut scores, but yet the same test.
Any other questions, comments?
I look forward to a follow-up on this next April, May sometime, once we get through the process and hear how it all goes.
Sounds good, we're looking forward to, keep it on, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, item number twelve um on our agenda, A and B are just our second readings. For our acceptable use policy and the public comment policy. And Sheila was here last month and went through that, we've had another thirty days to be able to review the information that she presented to us. And so tonight it is just on the agenda for us to um take action on. So I'm going to start out with the first one on the acceptable use policy, second reading. Um looking for a motion to approve that policy.
Motion to approve the acceptable use policy as presented.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the acceptable use policy, any further discussion on that policy before we vote? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Um B under twelve is our public comment policy. Um again, any questions or comments in regards to that policy? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve public comment policy.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Frick?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. Item number thirteen is our group health insurance plan and we have some considerations. A, B, and C um in regards to premium renewal rates and so they are in front of us. Shereen, anything you want to comment about any of them before we put that to a vote?
Our proposal is we meet as a group, um you, Jaclyn and Kathy, you were a part of that and we meet and we analyze all the data. And it came to a five point seven increase as far as for both plans. So that's what that A is, is approving the five point seven percent increase on both sides.
And the five point seven comes from you guys just looking at the plan and studying what else is?
Yeah, they put together, there's a meet, we have a meeting and they put together all the numbers and where we can save, so we don't go down, you know, deficit. To kind of just keep where we need to be, a five point seven increase is what's recommended.
With our insurance folks.
With our insurance folks.
Jaclyn and I are on there as personnel committee and then with admin and then the folks from the insurance.
Hub International, yes.
Yeah, and they come in and they do a comparison based on what our expenses and claims were from the previous year. Looking forward with their projections as far as what we can anticipate this next year. And then they make a recommendation to us to be able to increase, keep them the same. And and then we just kind of follow their guidance with that.
I will say it was very informative, this was something that, this was my first time participating in it. So being able to actually sit and understand the data that they're sharing with us and looking at what the enrollment was for current employees and. Those that aren't enrolled in it, um certain things that have worked, that people were interested in. Versus things that they weren't interested in, it was very informative, I felt like I learned a lot about the the policies and and what. Maybe the employees are are most drawn to and Hub was very, very patient and very good at explaining all of it and in detail, so. I'll just say on, from that perspective, I felt good about their recommendations just because of their research.
Is five point seven percent common year over year or what is a year over year average on increase on that? You said sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it goes high.
Last year we increased, we were at a, it was a fifteen, but we haven't increased for about, what, six years prior to that. But it was just taking the data and seeing where claims are headed and where where they're at. And so five point seven is really low if you take into different schools, I mean, we are part of the business manager group and well. They're getting high increases, I mean, very big increases, so five point seven is pretty low considering health insurance.
I think even if you look at it too from a business standpoint as well, a lot of businesses probably have higher renewal increases. When they do their employee meetings, you know, in that ten to fifteen percent range. I feel really confident and very proud of the fact that we've been able to keep our expenses low. And, you know, we just haven't had the claims and that's also something that, you know, we just look at as far as the claims, we don't know. You know, any of the particulars about it, we just see the dollars that are associated with the claims for it. And then just the projections going forward of what the insurance company themselves anticipate that we might encounter. And so that's where they come back to us, giving us that approximation for the increase. Further questions, good dialogue?
I have, I have a question, is this, does this account at all for the employer covered portion or?
It's a five point seven increase on both sides, what you see in this is just the employee part and then the employer part got the five point seven increase too. So it was both sides of that.
Good question, Jordan. All right, I would entertain a motion then on A to consider the active employee monthly health insurance premium renewal rates.
Motion to approve an increase of five point seven percent to active employee monthly health insurance premiums for the traditional plan? Do you want me to read the whole thing?
And high deductible.
And yeah, and high deductible.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the premium renewal rates for both the traditional and the high deductible plans at five point seven percent. Any further discussion or questions in regards to that? Hearing none, roll call.
Mueller?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. B under our group health insurance plan then is going to consider the retiree monthly health insurance premium renewal rates for both plans as well. Any questions in regards to the retiree?
So we have a plan, we're recommending a five point seven increase on that also, it's for the retiree and then the Cobra also will get the five point seven. But that's also analyzed and put in that report too, to let us know that we're we're covering our costs, we have a currently about eleven retirees on that plan. Um that can go from seven to eleven depending on, you know, age and stuff and if they elect to take it after they retire. And then the Cobra is always there for you, you're able to take that and it's a five point seven increase. Plus a two percent that we can't do much with that, two percent is always going to be on there for Cobra, for just different miscellaneous fees through the company.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, I would entertain a motion then for item B under the group health insurance plan.
Motion to approve an increase of five point seven percent on the retiree and. Or the retiree traditional and high deductible plan.
Including Cobra.
Including Cobra.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then on the health insurance premium for traditional high deductible for the retirees and the Cobra. Any further discussion or questions? With none, roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes. C under R thirteen is the voluntary insurance plan renewals. Um and Shereen, I'll let you go ahead and just talk to those items that are listed.
That's our Symantec, which has accident, critical illness, hospital, life and disability, also has VSP and Delta Dental. All benefits, um Delta Dental is the only one that increased, which is kind of a common, last year it was seven. Um it's around seven percent almost every year, it feels like, but seven percent increase for this year is what the Delta Dental is. The rest of them stayed the same, there was no increase on the rest of those. Insurances.
All right, very good, I would entertain a motion then on item C under thirteen for the voluntary insurance plan renewals.
All right, I'm going to try to get this right this time, motion to approve the renewals for the voluntary insurance plan for twenty twenty-six.
And a second please?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve those voluntary insurance plan renewal rates. Roll call please.
Mueller?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Frick?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Greenway?
Yes, last item on the agenda is motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
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 Those opposed, same motion, thank you and have a great night.
It feels weird as a Tuesday, doesn't it?